Agents, Mr. Dan Vane, would you lead us, please?
I'm an agent to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Terencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Backus.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Devrent.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here, all present. This time in the meeting, we open up the floor for comments from the public. If there's anyone that would like to address council, you'll be given three minutes. This would include any comments about Priority Waste. If you have any questions for Mr. Vane that you would like to ask. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? All right, moving on, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent business.
So moved.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Terencey, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent. Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. No unfinished business, no correspondence. Under new business, we have some friends here tonight from ABM Infrastructure Solution that are going to give us a little presentation. I believe, Mr. Tony Murray?
Yes, sir.
That's going to be you, sir.
So how do I advance it, or?
What's that?
How do I advance the slides?
You just tell me when to go ahead.
Oh, yes, sir. So, yeah, we can start right there for a second. So, thank you guys for meeting well tonight. My name is Tony Murray. I am from ABM Infrastructure Solutions. I'm my manager over here and one of our engineers. And tonight, we want to talk about energy solutions. We're what we call an ESCO company. That meaning that we try to find dollars for you to do your infrastructure building off your existing infrastructure. So, in this first slide, we talk about taking your infrastructure and using it to fund your projects. We talk about building your projects built on your budget. We also talk about you can reduce your current capital risk exposure. And then we at the end, we talk about our guarantee solution. Our guaranteed solution is that the energy savings that we say we're going to provide, we guarantee. So if we don't meet those expectations, we actually cut a check. And also, our guarantee is no change orders. If any of you have done projects, you know, change orders is a huge part of projects. So we guarantee that there won't be no, any, there will be change orders, but we will take care of them on our side, not on your side. Next slide. So this is what we call a fiscal clip. It looks at revenue and then resources. And this is what we talk, when we talk to most municipalities, this is what we find, that your revenues are staying the same and that your resource demands are going up. And this is across, you know, if we talked into a school district or if we're talking to other cities, this is commonly what we find. And I'm sure this is somewhat similar to you because there's no money coming in from the federal government. A lot of that money has dried up. And so you're kind of left to your own devices to, you know, fund your cities and budget them. And this is where companies like an ESCO company will come in. Next slide. So these are the adverse effects on communities typically when they're not finding funding. Overburdened general fund, deferred spending on capital projects needed for update infrastructure. I'm sure those are some of the pain points you guys have in your particular city. If you look down towards the end, safety and security, new technology, those are the things that you have, you typically need more money for. Whether it be drones to go up on water towers and see if the water tower is safe, whether it be predictive AI programs for maintenance, those things cost money. Next slide. So this is, we'll kind of do a deeper dive and look into you guys. City of Utica. Right picture up there, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I made a mistake of that. So your population is 5,000. You're currently looking at a DTE lighting proposal, and that's something I want to talk on. And then what your general fund was in 2025 and what your expenditure was. And you did a pretty, pretty good pencil sharpening there because you, you know, you came up with money at the end, so you didn't overrun. The buildings that we found were your city hall, fire department, library, and DP, TPW building. And then I did notice that you guys were looking at a future possible proposal of moving your city hall to another area. Next slide. So now that we talked about some of the challenges, this, these are the solutions that we come up with. If you look at the energy, I mean, if you look at the pie itself, what we do is we try to find slices out of each pie. So whether it be your energy, your capital avoidance, your loss productivity administrative, we convert those reduced expenses into capital. And that's, that's, that's kind of the, our secret sauce. Now, it says in-house staffing. We don't necessarily rearrange what you do for your staffing. But if you're using a repair guide to come in on Saturdays and fix a boiler that keeps on breaking, well, that's extra expenses that can be avoided. So, next slide. So this is, looking at the energy side, this is kind of how we do on the energy side. We take your community and we take each utility bills. And we go to what we call a benchmark. So if you see there, it says a dollar thirty-two, that's a benchmark per square foot of what is costing this particular data analysis to run. And what we do is we try to find dollars within that utility. So we'll look at your water, your gas, your electric, your propane, all your utility bills. And then we try to come up with a target of square foot that you're going to spend. So in this one, you see it went from a dollar thirty-two to ninety-eight cents. So that's a 25% saving, which over time equals 160,000. So that's how we look at it. Now, if you look here in establishing a project saving plan, we take that 160,000. And for every energy saving dollar we save, there's also a operational dollar to get saved. Okay, it's usually a one-to-one comparison. And this slide, we actually cut it down to just 100,000. But we take that 160,000 plus the operational savings, and we time that over a term for 20 years, that gives you $5 million. So there's a lot of infrastructure projects you can do just based on harnessing the power of your operational budget. And you can see there, it says grants. I'll talk about that in a second because we also look for grants. You know, grants usually cost money. You have to have a grant writing team to even find out if you can get a grant. Part of our process is to look for grants for you. Next slide. So we talked about the energy savings. Okay, now we talk about your capital exposure. So if you look at the, this is a busy slide, so I do apologize for it. But if you look at the A, B, and C's, and that we take each piece of equipment you have and each building you have, and we give it a grade. Now, we do this in tandem with your facility person. Okay, now, if you look towards the end, it says remaining life. So you can see some of it says four, some of it says zero. So we give, we assign it a remaining life. Now, if you look at the capital exposure over time, you can see how it adds up. Now, this, this is kind of an abbreviated chart, but you look at zero to five years, $13 million. That's just from carrying boilers, HVAC systems that you're, that's aging out and you're constantly fixing. And then the energy efficiency of older units versus newer units. So this is something we come in, we do, we call it a CVA tool. It's actually, most people know about the term performer, but this is kind of something we set up and we build with you guys. And this is as we, as we move together, this is how we would, you know, reduce your capital exposure risk. Next slide. So we talked about grants. Grants are something that, you know, are hard to get, very timely, you know. So if you, if you're in Michigan and you're trying to get a grant, that's different than being in, in Chicago. So we have a grant writing team. So they will focus on what grants are available in this area from the state of Michigan or federal grants. And we would make sure that we try to line you up with the grants as they come available. Some grants only come available once a year in the beginning of the year. Some grants will come available at the end of the year. But that is the, what our grant writing team does is if we partner with you, we will try to line you up for all grant money. And it's, and it's not a process we charge for this. This actually just comes along with the process. Next slide. So talking about the key benefits. So we talked about your infrastructure needs, your guaranteed energy and operational savings, a turnkey solution. So it's one throat to choke. So we commission, we spec, we do the project management, and you, we're one person, you're responsible to one person, and that would be us, and then no change orders. So we would guarantee our energy savings, and we would guarantee no change orders. Now, so the energy savings, just talk about that guarantee when we look at that 160 number. Say over three years, you come back and you say, you know what? The energy savings number was wrong. You know, we're, it's not 160, it's 180. Well, then we would owe you a check at that point. And we would correct that to get that energy savings down to what we said it should be or try to realign it. But that's our guarantee. We guarantee our energy savings. If we say you're going to save this much money each year, and it's not specking out, you're not saving that money, then we actually cut you a check. And that's what, that's how ESCO companies function in respect to other bid and spec type companies. Next slide. So this is a case study that was done. And you can see the energy savings we were able to come up was 2.6 million operational savings over 15 years. What was that? That was just doing LED lights, HVAC system, building automation, a bill, envelope sealing, and improved ventilation. Ovallope sealing is if you have a lot of holes in your building about this big, they go hole about this big, and you have energy going out. So we'll go around the building, we'll make sure it's sealed up so none of your energy is escaping. Next slide. So if looking at the slide, the timeline, the first thing we would do, and this is what I talked to the mayor about when we met, is assigning of a memorandum of understanding. Now, what that is, is just something that says that you agree to let us look at your utilities, you agree to walk us around, and we go assess the building. There's no charge for you. And if we walk around and we don't see that you guys aren't fit for us, you know, we go our separate ways. Or if you guys look and say, nah, this isn't a fit for us, we go our separate ways. The memorandum of understanding doesn't commit you to do anything for us or us to do anything for you beyond just going around and assessing the property and then coming back to you and giving you a presentation like we're doing right now. And so I met with the mayor, and he looked at it, he thought it was, you know, a good idea, wanted to bring it past you guys. Any thoughts? Questions?
The only thing, yeah. I guess to, I guess it's a good idea to walk around and give us some suggestions, and we can probably decide after that.
Yeah.
See if it fits. I think that would work.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd want to see the memorandum agreement.
I have, I have a copy of it right here, ma'am.
This is Ms. McGrail, she's our city attorney. Just so you know.
And our approach?
Absolutely.
I'm not a judge, so you're.
Not yet, not yet, not yet. Is that the last slide, Tori? Before I click?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys have any other questions or queries?
I'm thinking next steps would be let Ms. McGrail review this.
Okay.
Probably, we wouldn't be ready to have, to vote whether we want to move forward until our next council meeting.
Okay.
But I'll have an agenda item after Ms. McGrail's had a chance to review it. I think, you know, some council people are still looking, you know, this is the first time they're reviewing this presentation. So they may have some questions, maybe between now and the next council meeting. I can compile any questions that they have.
Mr. Murray, I have a question right away, though.
Absolutely.
What's other cities do you have relationships with?
We have other, well, I showed you one in the slide there. We have other cities throughout the state of Michigan, throughout the country.
Anyone locally comparatively by size and population?
I think I showed you St. Joseph. We have some other, we work on.
Any here locally?
Locally, like, and it's like royal local, something like that?
So if we're talking like, my question is like similar-sized municipalities, similar situations, like population or square mileage, like Centerline, Ferndale, anything in those areas, any other small cities?
I can get you case studies of others, other geographical areas where we have similar populations.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you send a Word version of this document to someone to forward on to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
I get your email address?
What's that?
Your email.
L McGrail@YorkDolanLaw.com.
Okay.
You just send it to the mayor.
You just send it to me, Tori. Okay.
Anybody else? But I know, I can.
So St. Joseph is one municipality you have relationship with.
Yes, sir. And I will, I will find some others in Michigan to send it to you. And I'll also find, I get to what your question is, you want somebody kind of your size and demographic.
Apples, apples, right?
Yes, sir.
So do you have any letters of support from any of these municipalities that have experienced?
We do, yes, actually, we do, yes.
Positive response where we can?
It's a similar challenge facing schools, counties, and cities, municipalities, right? So Bridge Park Spalding is a project that we completed a little while ago.
Sir, could you go to the mic so that our cable will?
Sure.
Be able to pick you up.
Bridge Park Spalding was a district that we worked with. He's in the process of actually helping us to create a video over what we helped him accomplish. Ultimately, what we, we look for is we want you to be the next reference for us. Ultimately, if this makes sense for you and we proceed and that you're actually qualified to perform a project, we would want the next City of Utica to reach out to you to get your feedback. So like Tony said, we'll put you in touch with as many, you know, cities, county schools as you'd like to talk with. But this program, we don't just perform this within Michigan, we do this nationwide. Each state has a different variation of the legislation that's utilized to do this type of project. And I can put you in touch with plenty of references.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Our potential savings is 25%. What is the average savings with the communities that you're?
That, that information is not your information.
Oh, that's not.
That is not your information. We just wanted to use it because we haven't got, we haven't gathered any information from you. So in order for us to determine if we can save you anything, we have to have a baseline from which to work with. That information was just for example purposes or concept purposes, to explain what it is we do. I'm very graphic, I'm very visual, so to try to verbalize what we do, I don't think would work as well, quite honestly. And so, but the typical average, I would say, is about 20 to 25% in terms of savings. Now, if you have highly efficient systems here, then there probably isn't going to be as much savings. But we'll quantify that for you. And then at each step, our goal isn't to set the bar high and then fall short of it. I'd rather, you know, set it here and then exceed it each time. And so I'm not going to give you pie in the sky numbers if we can't, we can't deliver upon that.
And sir, could you state your name so that clerk could get you in the?
Richard Phelps.
Say it again, please.
Richard Phelps.
Richard Phelps. Thank you.
Good question, sir. Yes, sir.
So in your sample here, you had mentioned savings of 160 plus 100, and then how that rolled back into the budget over a 20-year term. How are you making money on that? Are you, is it a percentage or is this a flat rate?
So that would enable you to perform a $5 million project, right? So I would say go forward one more slide.
Councilman Devrent, I don't think your mic is on.
So if this was your project, right? So we would find funding for essentially $5.2 million. So you can perform $5.2 million worth of work over today. On an annual basis, as Tony mentioned, we have to guarantee those savings. To answer your question, our process, what we do in this process is we design, engineer, procure, project manage, and commission. So that's what Tony means in terms of the one throat to choke. If you've been involved in construction projects in the past, you have design engineer, and then you have the contractor, or the contractors, right? I designed it this way, it's not working right. No, I installed it per design. It's pointing fingers back and forth, and who's left with the bag of money to fix it? You, right? That's the change order process. With this, because we design, engineer, procure, project manage, and commission, we're involved with all aspects of this. And so that's why we're able to offer the guarantee, right? Because I can drive that outcome that you're looking for. So, but what we hope to make, we're a publicly traded company, hope to make 10% on your projects. That doesn't happen all the time. Because as you can imagine, where you don't get the change orders, change orders happen to us in every single project. So it's trying to manage that, and we work with local contractors, contractors who have done good work for you. And I also want to know the contractors that haven't performed well for you. Because I, it's an outcome-based solution, right? So whether, if that was your project for $5.2 million, and it costs us $6 million to do the project, you still pay $5.2 million, and I have a lot of questions for this gentleman over my, my shoulder, right? Asking like, what happened? What did we miss and so forth? So it requires us to be very thorough upfront to ensure that we're not missing anything. Then is your question?
Yeah, so you're, you would be targeting under that number instead of obviously above?
Right, I would look to, and we don't guarantee.
By 10%, that's your target, or that's what you're?
That's what my target is, but it typically whittles down from there based upon how well and how thorough we are upfront. Make sense?
Yep.
And we don't guarantee, like, that 160,000 in energy, I don't guarantee 100% of what we expect you to see either. Right? Because if I did, and you saw 99% of those savings, you're disappointed, I'm disappointed, we have to write you a check, right? So there are buffers in here to ensure, and they're your facilities, right? If you want to walk around, and it's based upon temperature ranges, right? In summer and winter. But if you want to walk around in this building in shorts and keep the thermostat set at 80 degrees, that's fine, you can do that. Like, we don't, oh, you can only operate it this way, right? Same thing in summer. If you like to walk around in parkas because you keep the thermostat at 55 degrees, that's your choice. We'll quantify the impact upon that, right? We have temperature ranges, which I think is acceptable from like 72 to 76 from an air conditioning and 68 to 70 from a heating standpoint, right? If you're in that range, your facility, you run it the way you want. But if you wanted to keep it at 90 degrees, like I said, you could. But we'll quantify what that impact is to your guarantee. And then you just say, okay, we want to operate your facility that way.
Great, okay.
So that, like, if you did 90 degrees, we'd probably cut that down to $120,000 a year, right? In terms of a guarantee. But it's based upon how you operate your facility. Make sense?
It does.
Good. Good question.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
We'll probably be talking because Ms. McGrail needs some info, and maybe you can also send me the information that Councilman Deanne was asking for.
Yes.
And we'll see what happens at next council meeting.
All right, appreciate you guys' time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. All right, next on the agenda is Historic District Commission appointment of Mr. Tom Galaska.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Tom Galaska to the Historic District Commission.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell, any discussion? That was the quickest. I think Mr. Galaska does deserve just a little bit of an intro. He's currently on our planning commission. He's served on, on that commission for many years. He's a longtime resident of the Historic District. He's at most council meetings, he's not here tonight ironically, but he's often here, he's very engaged in what's happening in the city.
Mayor, did you wait until he was not here to make this appointment?
I did not. He actually asked to be appointed, so I think this is a great add for the city, so thank you very much. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We will let Mr. Galaska know. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a short film request to close an alley. I think the gentlemen are here tonight. If you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Fritz. I'm the unit production manager for a short film called Quick and Painless. So as far as the short alley closure, that's going to be from Brunel to Cass Avenue, that exit off onto Auburn Road. So I've gained the agreement of Matt Klosny, Bill Diamond, for having that happen. And it would be from September 21st, 6:00 PM till about 2:00 AM. And then September 22nd, that Monday, from 6:00 PM till about 2:00 AM.
And what, I'm sorry, which side of Auburn is this? The north side or the south side?
This would be some, so the, the south side, Brunel Street.
So the alley that runs behind like Steampunk and?
Yes, yep. So behind the locker room, the studio. So Eric Steele of the studio, in conjunction with them, will be producing this film.
Okay. And I tried to review your drawings, I had a little bit of trouble with it. Where would the, where would you, the barricades go, right? You're going to close, you want to close that service drive?
Yeah, so, so the, the cones or the barricade would be, I sent a photo in the email thread there. But basically, making a left onto that service drive there, that alley, and it would just, yeah, block off that, that one, one entrance into that one-way alley.
Like behind Miguel's?
Well, after, after Miguel's, after Miguel's.
Behind Steampunk?
Yeah, behind Steampunk. So essentially, like where the Fisher apartment, say, parking lot. So that, from that, that area of the alley over towards the entrance area.
Yeah.
So that parking lot would be open, but?
Correct.
The south side of it, you would not be able to exit onto that?
Yeah, because you could still go towards Miguel's and all that, and that parking lot will still be accessible. You just wouldn't be able to exit off of Cass, onto Cass Avenue.
And it, do they go all the way behind locker room as well, that turn?
It does.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah.
Chief, well, it's like, do you see any problems? I know we, our emergency vehicles sometimes use that.
We'll get access.
That was my main concern is the, the safety, of course, and want to make sure that you guys were aware of it. Yeah.
And do we need city resources to actually close the road or police this or anything like that?
Mayor, in my conversations with them, there's going to be no police needed. They're just going to use cones and have it, and the time of day between, it's Sunday and Monday, correct?
Sunday, Monday, yep.
6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Not, not a high-traffic area through there since it's that, that back portion over there.
I think it's in here. That's insurance. That's all I have.
So no additional contract is added as an additional insured?
So you don't see any other issues, chief? Either chief?
I don't see any, ma'am.
And I did mention in the agenda summary, if there is a need for the City of Utica to be placed on our general liability, that can happen. I can make that happen pretty easily, yeah.
That's exactly what I was looking for. I'm probably a waiver indemnification provision to associate with this.
I can have that provided as well. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So along with additional insured, I can, I can make sure that indemnification is provided as well.
Perfect.
Yep.
So I think we'd be looking for a motion to approve the request subject to Ms. McGrail receiving. And can you state what documents you need?
Like a waiver and indemnification provision to the benefit of the city. I have some standard language I typically use for my municipal clients. I'm sure we, I can get your information or vice versa, and we can work out some terminology on that, and then being added as an additional insured onto your liability insurance.
Thank you. That can happen.
Well, I didn't, you don't need to thank me, I'm asking for stuff from you.
Either way, thank you for, for listening to us.
Is it true that the mayor's gonna have a cameo in this?
Yeah, like Alfred Vichak or something.
Some sort of credit?
That would be fun, you could play one of our homeless individuals.
It wouldn't be much of a stretch. It wouldn't be a stretch, trust me.
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said.
And this is for, this is for the studio's Horror Roulette event, isn't that?
Oh, you're familiar, actually it is not, however, it was born from an idea from, from the festival, yeah.
Oh, great.
Aaron's brother is actually director.
Ryan Steele, yeah, he's the director.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right, so let me see if I can get this right, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the request subject to receiving the waiver of indemnification and being added as an additional insured.
Waiver and indemn, waiver and indemnification provisions and being added as additional insured. And just probably put that those are.
Sounds really close to what I said. I think there was an extra and.
You said or, I said and.
She's gonna prove it, so that, you know, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Deion, support by Terrence, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Do you gentlemen have my email, you could probably send it to me, mayor@cityofutica.org?
Yeah.
And I'll make sure she gets every, everything.
Absolutely, and would you like my partner here, Josh, to introduce himself for?
Sure.
Sure.
Step right up.
I'm Josh Tavi, I'm the producer for this project, for Quick and Painless.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the honor of being visited by Mr. Dan Vinay from Priority Waste. He's got some updates for us about things going on with his company and how it's gonna impact service in Utica. And he's also available for any questions that we may have.
Thank you for the invite, and Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, Dan Vinay, Vice President of Municipal Sales. So with priority, a couple of big things and good things that are occurring for, at our business is acquisition of additional vehicles. We went through a little bit of, I call a flu bug in different yards over the May and June timeframe. Similarly to how like little kids get a flu and then they pass it on to their parents and it just lingers for a while. It was kind of what we were dealing with out of our Sterling Heights yard, which is where your vehicles start from. So we had some troubles in, in June, it didn't help that June was also a pretty hot month, and then there was some pretty nasty storms that came through, whether it be on or before your service day, it still impacts your service. Since those days and those times, our maintenance team worked tirelessly, countless hours and weekends, to get the fleet back up and running. We've acquired, we made a purchase of 100 vehicles in August of 2024. 68 of those vehicles have hit our parking lots. So we expect the remaining 32 to come in before the end of the year. We have an internal goal that's gonna be before that, to hopefully assist with compost season, but we've been at least guaranteed by the end of the year. We did place another order for additional vehicles for 2026. And now, most of your vehicles that would come through here outside of spares and replacements are priority vehicles. We started your contract in 2020, and those vehicles have predominantly stayed the same outside of, you know, if they don't start up that morning, or they have an issue during the day. But they should be primarily the same vehicles and the same crews. Your logistic driver coordinator, who's the eye in the sky in our office, his name is Drew D. Giovanni. He is watching over the routes and sees the, the service as it's occurring through our camera systems and watching the cookie crumb of our trucks as they're, they're driving through the streets, so he can proactively identify where we're at in the day, percentage-wise to completion. If there's gonna be a delay, communicate that to the mayor and to the clerks, that they're well-aware and can communicate it out to public. So it reduces the temperament, but as well as keeping our crews on task, engaging with the residents as they call, providing with recovery actions as needed. So what we've seen in July and August, as we got through those two months pretty flawlessly, we expect that to continue, especially with that influx of new vehicles. So when, as a backtrack, when we took over the GFL contract, there was a little bit of disarray, there was a lot of chaos in other communities, and we tried to keep Utica from feeling any pain, knowing that there was gonna be some that we couldn't avoid, but we tried to avoid it at all costs and possibilities. I feel like we did a pretty good job with that, knowing that you guys chose us six, five years ago, and we appreciate that. We, we really kept that at the forefront of our, our, our thought process and decision-making policies. So we know that any call coming into the mayor's office, to the clerk assessing, or anybody that's calling, not us, but calling you, we know is a burden, so we try to minimize those as much as possible. So as we stand today, we, we look forward to a continuous positive partnership. We appreciate working with you and collaborating with all of you. Your residents are phenomenal individuals to, to engage with. Drew really enjoys talking to members of the public when they call in, whether it be good, bad, or indifferent. Everybody has been respectful and we appreciate that. There are things that we do wrong, and there's things that we need to educate the residents that they do it right, so in order for us to complete service. But not one interaction that we've had has been one that I would say is a bad one. It's either learning on our side, or we're able to educate on the other. So I want that to be said, that we appreciate all the residents of Utica, the leadership of Utica, the council, everybody that I've talked to, thank you for all you've done. And we continue to, to move this forward.
Excellent. I know, I will say, and we've had this conversation, Dan, before, when you guys bought GFL, I was nervous. I was like, oh boy, are they spreading themselves too thin, are we gonna be, is our service gonna be impacted because of these new clients that you picked up, new cities that you picked up? I've gotta say, we made it through that transition with very few hiccups, you know, so that was completely, I was completely impressed and pleased that, you know, our service didn't degrade during that transition time. We had a few hiccups this summer, you know, based on the truck shortages and that we talked, that you mentioned. You guys are always proactive. You know, I drive the city the morning after garbage day pretty much every week, unless I have a meeting, early meeting I have to go to. And you know, I, I always find something, usually, but I think it's within that band of acceptability, you know, a couple misses here, a couple misses there. I think any company would do that. I do, I will say though, the last two weeks, I didn't find anything. So you made my, my tour through Utica kind of futile, the last two weeks. I like that, I like futile tours through Utica. So when we do find stuff, Drew is fantastic, you know, he's very, he reacts perfectly. He lets me know when we can expect the misses to be, you know, recovered. And that goes a long way, as you mentioned, I think, that anxiety level. You know, when the resident doesn't know what's going on, that's when, you know, the frustration kind of boils up and the anger boils up. So, you know, in concert with you and Drew and us, you know, the city clerk and myself, we do our best to reach out to the residents and let them know, you know, you were missed, we know it, we're working on it, you can expect to be picked up by 4:00 PM. And I think that, I think that goes a long way to, you know, keeping that relationship solid, so. Thank you for all you do, thank Drew from us, you know, I know he does, he works very hard.
He does.
When was Friday garbage? That was last week, right, because of Memorial Day? I'm emailing Drew on Saturday, you know, and he's responding, so maybe he needs a little race.
How about, how about his boss know?
I have something to add, so when did you guys, when did you guys take over GFL, when did that happen?
Officially, July 1st of last year.
So I heard stories from people that are kind of in the know, that you had vehicles that were owned by GFL, and some employees are unhappy with transition, they actually took the keys, the vehicles, they destroyed or threw them out in the field, and you guys had vehicles without keys for a period of time.
I can't substantiate that claim, what I can say is trucks were delivered to various yards without axles. That one is a known issue that we had to scrounge around and find hidden axles in various yards. There was tampering done to the hydraulic lines, you know, in spots that you couldn't see, but as soon as you got to a certain temperature and pressure, they would burst and blow right away, and that could have, you know.
I was going this route, it's like, I can only imagine what it's like to try to bring two companies together and take over their workload the next day. And then have, we, we can't get people to work in restaurants, let alone work in the trash industry. And the, and negative five degrees in February, and 95 degrees in July, I can only imagine the hardness of staff, those people. But through the challenges between, coming between what you guys did to, you know, it was kind of seamless here in Utica, we had, we had a couple houses that missed trash, that happens. Yeah, I, I think it was a growing pain for you guys, not a reflection of your service level, but a growing pain that anyone can be expected, and I guess I think you guys did a good job. As a resident who looks outside and sees my trashcans out there, they're gone when they're usually gone, you know, and, and I, I gotta, I'm one of those guys, I see you guys out there working real hard in July, I take bottles of water, man, hey, thanks for doing this stuff. You know, I'm happy that they're out there, because I don't want to see that stuff sitting out there, it's not a fun job, and I'm, I'm glad that they do it, and it doesn't cost me a ton of money to get it done. So I appreciate your service.
Thank you, I, I remember as a kid, and living, growing up in Warren, our trash day was on Mondays, and I know for a fact I was one of those kids that didn't take the trash out on Monday on my way to Wilkerson. But I remember in awe, watching the garbage man, or, you know, recycling man that take the material and sort it into the, into the truck, or throw it into the truck, and I remember that. And I also remember, you know, that was at a time and day when my parents were like, go to college to not become a garbage man, so here I am 20 years later, selling garbage. The ironic, irony of that statement, but it, it's true, we are having, you know, in this industry, it's difficult to hire, and it's difficult to keep employees. You know, we're competing with McDonald's in a sense now, where they're paying 15, 16, $17 an hour to work in a covered restaurant where they're grilling and just, you know, standing there in a nice environment. But we're dealing with the extreme cold and the extreme heat, the, the rain, the snow, everything in between, so, you know, if they're, what I would say is, is a lot of our guys take a lot of pride in their work, and they probably got a similar message to me as a kid, but now that they're in it, they realize the, how important this is. When trash does get missed, or recycling, or yard waste, what, what that feels like on the homeowner. So I appreciate the sentiment that you gave, because it's important that people remember that they are humans, we all make mistakes, and they work. I'm not envious of their positions, because it's a very, it's a thankless and very tiring job.
Well, I am a little upset that you mentioned you had recycling as a kid, because I don't think anyone else in this room had recycling as a kid, maybe one or two people, the rest of us are way older than that.
Multi-stream, they were sorting it at the curb.
And Dan, we announced that we were gonna, you were gonna be here visiting us on social media and in our email newsletter. I only received one correspondence, and I'd like to read it, I think you'd enjoy to hear this as well, it's from Ms. Donna Bernardo. She said, "Dear Mr. Mayor, I saw that you put out a notice that Priority Waste has been put on tonight's council, city council agenda, and wanted to pass along my compliments on their service. We have had very few issues with them since Utica started using them, they are very pleasant to deal with and responsive on the occasion when issues have arose, i.e. lawn waste missed. And it is typically resolved by the next day. I felt the need to send this email as I know Priority Waste has been subjected to much criticism in other cities and the media. I didn't want that to be the case in Utica. I also would like to commend whomever worked on the initial contract with them, as I believe we are getting a higher-level service than other communities negotiated, especially based on the service pickups I have observed, such as in Sterling Heights where my family lives. I believe that we are paying for good service, sincerely, Donna Bernardo." So that was the only correspondence I received, and it's a nice one. One last thing for me, I, I know you and I had a conversation, the, one of the most frequent concern, or complaints I get from residents is, you know, I really don't want them calling Lori or myself on garbage day. And so I usually say, hey, you know, when they, when they do get through to me, I say, you know, here's the Priority Waste number, you give it a call, that's the best way to get service. And there's been a few situations where the residents told me, well, I waited for two hours, I tried to go that route, or, you know, whatever the case may be. I know I brought that to your attention, and you said you were making some configuration changes in your call center, and maybe the residents might want to hear about that.
Yeah, so in the transition, the first day, because previous contractor kind of limped to the finish in other communities, there were, there were weeks, not days, of material laying in other communities, so we came in with problems, not only with the trucks, but then also with the volume of material left. So naturally, residents called us to try and get us to fix the issue that happened the week before. And in the first four hours, it was like 5,000 to 7,000 calls that we had received, and now on an average up to that point, we averaged less than 2,000 calls a week, so when you go to 7,004 hours, it more or less crashed our phone system. And, you know, it took us a while to identify the root cause of the issue. And what it ended up doing is the volume of calls kicked the system into just sending phone calls into La La Land. And we had to quickly, as fast as possible, transition to a brand-new phone system, went through a four-phase rollout in the first, last quarter of last year, where that rolled in and got into play in January. Calls fell down as far as the number of calls in that time period, and hold times got back to a understandable average of less than five minutes. Then it, we got back into fall season, people had questions, bills went out for other communities that paid direct by the resident, and we saw an influx of calls, and then there was a, kind of a, another patch that we did on the backside to fix queues, and a queue is where your call gets routed. So if I live at 1234 Smith Street in Utica, I call into Priority, I say I'm at that address, they get me to a queue for that community. So what we did is, is we tried at one point to lump the calls together with regional. So that could be Utica with Sterling Heights, with Macomb, with Clinton Township, and then we'd have other community, other areas and all of these queues. And what we found is that regional wasn't the best option, because regional, it's a very dense pocket here in Macomb County, a lot of residents, a lot of homes. So we thought, well, maybe we need to reconfigure so that the queues are more aligned with number of units, so that it's more spread out and equal and fair. That will increase our capacity and speed time in answering phone calls. So that happened in May and June, where we did all this work on the backside, rolled out at the middle part of June, and since then, the call average time has been less than seven, still trying to get down below five. But that's been the average hold time of seven minutes. Now, if you call 8:02 in the morning, when we get the biggest rush of calls from the day prior, there may be an extended hold time, we're still trying to work on paths and ways around this to make it easier to get through. And we're also looking at alternative ways for residents to self-report. So we have currently a blank generic form to contact us on our website, that can go to our inbox, that can go to Drew to send a recovery. Another thing that we're working on is this automated system that, instead of it being an email chain that forwards on to Drew, it is an immediate input into what we have as a portal on our side, that he would get that alert the second the person hits enter. So all he would have to do is refresh his page, which it does, I believe, every 10 to 15 seconds automatically anyway. So that's something that we're, we've done a test pilot in another community, it's worked really, really well. We didn't necessarily use it in Utica, because we don't have an abundance of calls, it wouldn't be a good test pilot, because we're not getting hundreds of calls a week, let's say. So we ran it in one that was stable but needed some love and tender care. Now we saw the benefits of it in that community, where it's going right to the LDC in their community for action and recovery. It's speeding up recovery from what was 22 hours on average, down to 13 hours. So that's a significant improvement, half the time that recovery would need, and that could be, and that's taking in off-time into account as well. So that's something that we'll get in front of you in the next few weeks, to get onto our website and have it hyperlink from your website into ours. So that's another avenue, for those that are capable, have the access, we don't want it to say, say, don't call us, because like I said, we do enjoy those interactions on the phone, but we also want to find a way for people to more or less gamify their, their service and just go on to something on their phone.
Any other questions? I think that's it.
Wonderful, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Department reports, the big news I have tonight is our Nightmare on Auburn Halloween Festival. It's on October 4th, it's, there will be road closures, Auburn Road will be closed that day for the whole day, until I believe six, parts of Auburn will be closed all day until like 9:00 PM. We're gonna try to open up the eastern side of Auburn for the restaurants and bars. Earlier, I believe it's 6:00 PM, is that right, chief?
That's, that's correct, mayor, we're gonna, roads are gonna be closed down, hard shut down at 8:00 AM. And then the footprint from just outside City Hall over here, all the way down to Cass, will be shut down till, till 6:00. And then we're gonna move that footprint in past Brunel to open up for the downtown businesses, and then everything will be done at 8:00.
8:00. So it's a fun day, there's live music all day, there's storytime that our library's sponsoring, I believe there's arts and crafts for the kids. Everything kicks off more oriented towards younger children in the morning from 12 to 2. Will be trick-or-treating time, all the vendors that are participating will be providing candy for the, for the kids to trick-or-treat. And then the event slowly transforms into more of an adult, you know, grown-up event with live music all the way till when chief said 8:00, when it closes. So hope to see lots of people there, it's a fun event, this will be our third annual, and it's one of my favorites, so hope to see you all there. Does anyone else from council have anything to report?
I would just like to say thank you to fire and police for being at St. Lawrence Apple Fest and supporting us and watching out for us as you always have, so thank you very much, both of you.
We were well represented.
Excellent. Anybody else? We have nothing from assessing or building, but we do have Ms. Francis here to report from the library. Nothing to report?
No, I mean, landscaping is kind of done, and the majority of it is done, so we're happy about that, a long time coming, but, yeah, there's still some things that have to be buttoned up. But yeah, we're happy about it, it looks great.
It looks great.
So, yeah.
I think I told you at the department head meeting, that at the weekend on, our Friday night music events, you know, the, a lot of the visitors got to see the library, and you received a lot of compliments about the upgrades, so.
I mean, it looks good during the day, but at night, with the, the lighting that they put in, it looks really, really good, so they did, they did set the tone, didn't they?
They did a great job there.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Chief Wilson?
Yes, Mayor and council, tonight I am coming forward with a, the city has received, the City Utica Fire Department has been awarded a State of Michigan grant in the amount of $300,000 for the purchase of fire and emergency medical technician radios. The grant is administered by LEO, which is a Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. The State of Michigan requires that the grant recipient obtain a minimum of three bids, unless the subject of the grant is available from a sole source, in which case LEO requires a motion, motion from city council to approve a sole-source purchase. The city's purchase policy permits through MyDeal program as complying with the city's requirements for three or more bids. The City of Utica Fire Department has obtained a quote from Motorola Solutions, a sole-source vendor, which has negotiated a contract with the State of Michigan under MyDeal contract number 1. And I need a motion to accept the Michigan Grant, Utica Fire, 25 in the amount of $300,000 for the purchase of fire and emergency medical technician radios.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Weaver. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
I need a second motion to authorize the fire department to purchase radios from Motorola Solutions. Quote 2955018, a sole source motion to our vendor pursuant to Michigan MyDeal Contract. I lost my spot here. A sole source vendor pursuant to MyDeal Contract 1900000001544.
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
And last but not least, I need a motion to amend the fiscal year 2026 general fund fire department budget, increasing by 300,000 the revenue 101-336-569000LEOF25, other state grants, Utica Fire 25, and the expenditure of 101-336-982000LEOF25, radio equipment.
I'll make that motion. That was a mouthful.
Motion by Terrencey.
Got through it. Support.
You did a good job.
Support.
Support by Beckus. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
And the fire department, thanks you for approving that. And the efforts of the mayor is what got us this money, so appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Because we have antique radios.
Not for long.
No. We're working on the ones we borrowed from Warren. See ya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Kuzniak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet is a budget amendment, and this is for our mobile vehicle barrier system. I had sent correspondence when the barriers had actually made in. We were actually able to use them this last weekend at the St. Lawrence Festival. And I can tell you from firsthand knowledge, or firsthand moving them and being out there, that it was a great purchase for our city. They are super easy to deploy, but they really get the job done. I received numerous compliments from St. Lawrence organizers, just to the, how professional they looked and how safe they felt about the interior of the perimeter. They really do a great job out there. While we have this great equipment, unfortunately, the company wants their money to fund the rest, all the stuff they dropped off. So included in your packet here is a budget amendment, and the prior purchase was approved by council in the fiscal year '25. So what I'm asking for is to bring that money back until fiscal year '26, so we can not only pay the bill, but receive the money for the grant. So this is, this is a zero-cost grant to the city. So the money that we are going to be spending out, we will be receiving back from the state, and it's not going to cost our taxpayers anything. So I'd be requesting a motion to amend the fiscal year '26 police budget revenue account other state grants GL 101-301-569-000 by $200,000. And the expenditure account equipment purchase GL 101-301-981-000 by $200,000.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you very much for that. And for council members that didn't see it, we will have them out at Nightmare on Auburn. So please come out, and I'll show you how they work, how they move around, and kind of give you a little example of them. We're also hoping, we just received a portion of our Taser 10 purchase that was approved from last council meeting. So part of that purchase is a VR system. We're going to try, our training isn't going to be till after the event, but we're going to try bringing it out to the event, have some kids kind of put on the VR helmet and work them through a couple scenarios and stuff. So if you're out there, you see us, we'll put the VR helmet on you and, you know, kind of show you what new tools and techniques we have for the police department.
Thank you.
Very cool. Thanks, Chief. Superintendent Diamond?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple things on the agenda. The first one is for a new fleet vehicle plow repair kit. It is, the plow repairs for our 2016 Ram 5500. They were included in our budget talks and approved for, I requested $5,000, and three quotes were obtained. The best quote I got was $3,817.99, and that included delivery. I am asking for a motion not to exceed the 5,000, just in case we have any hiccups, which I'm not expecting, but I want to make sure I don't have to come back to council if that is the case. So a motion from City Council to approve the purchase for the plow blade crate and center hinge pin kit from Sloan Sales and Service in the amount not to exceed $5,000 from Street Department Truck Maintenance 101-441-868000.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Devrent. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. My next agenda item is for the purchase of our Ferguson R900 radios. We did purchase, if you remember, the beginning of the budget, we had $24,000 that we were approved to purchase everything we needed that was, as of that moment. Well, now, you know, with the new replacements of the water lines, we're finding more issues with our older radios, which are 15 years old. Normally, we order them as they go, and, you know, to keep under the purchase policy of $1,000, but because we're, we need so many, I'm requesting it all in one batch. So Mike Francis, who is our water operator, can go and do them as they come. Again, we've got 15 years out of these radios, so we, they have seen a good life, and I probably will be back later in the year to purchase more, but this at least get us going and give us some stock. So a motion for City Council to approve the purchase of 40 R900 V4 wall-mounted radios, included in the, including the Neptune surcharge fee in the amount not to exceed $6,510 from Water Sewer Department meters 592-536-740110.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Weaver. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The fourth one is our city's pressure-reducing valve, or PRV, which is located at Auburn Road, near our city limits. It's our only pressure-reducing valve, where we get our water from Gleywa. It has been installed and maintained since 1986. We have definitely got our use out of that, knock on wood. It'll get us to, when we get these, these new ones in. So we will be getting two of them. I did get three quotes. The three quotes were, the company that I went with is the company who actually installed the original one right now. So he knows our meter pit. He knows what is needed down there. And his installation fee is a lot less than the other ones, because we are going to be helping him. So instead of him mobilizing a bunch of units, we'll use our backhoe, we'll use our lift. So we will have two guys helping him and his colleague as well. So again, we did budget for this, so I'm not asking for money. That wasn't already approved. So I'm asking a motion from City Council to approve the replacement of the 1986 Berman PRV Model 720 through Corin Maine and MBD Distributing, and for the amount not to exceed $30,000 from Water and Sewer Systems Water Improvements and Expansion 596-536-971100.
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Beckus. Any discussion?
If this is considered old, and it's only three years older than I am.
You're not even kidding me, right?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the billing. I noticed on this, there's two quotes for four and for two. For the four valves, it's $1,200 apiece, and for the two valves, it's $1,500.
Oh, let me look where you're at.
On the hand wheel?
Mm-hmm.
Which page are you looking at?
I'm on page 143, which is a two.
Oh, so that, the one, the one quote was just for one unit. So we need two units. So the second one is that the numbers on here is we need, we need four. The quantities on the Corin Maine that shows a price of $23,736.90 is showing for both. It's just a different model than the other one. The other one that is showing for $16,000 is actually just for one, and they forgot to quote for two, so it would be double that price, and we'd be looking at 32, oh, $33,000 for that second quote.
But it's actually the first line, where it's a quantity of four. For the four of them, it says, units would be four. $1,200 per unit. Then on the two units?
Oh, I got you.
It's $1,500.
Where do you, where are you seeing the?
I'm on page 133.
It's the first page of the quote.
Is it page one of two?
This one says four.
Oh, I got you right. So that, that should say two on that one, for the 12, or four, yeah.
Four.
So this, this other one is a different brand.
Oh, okay.
And there would be, it would, you'd have to double that.
So it's not half, it's half.
Right. It's just, yeah, it's, Corin Maine sells two kinds of Berman and a Solv. So we're going with the Solv with the pricing.
Gotcha.
So that, that's why these numbers are off by half, because they only quoted the one. So it would be a double, everything would be doubled to that 32 price.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else to report?
Just wanted to let you know that verifications are going to be starting for the service lines that we have unknown. So those notices went out to those residents. They would have received a pink notice. I did receive a few phone calls. Those that did receive it, HRC has received a few phone calls. And they're just going to be doing what DPW did at the end of the year last year, which will be, you know, they'll be at the factor at the curb stop box to confirm what their service line is coming into their curb box and what is going into the house. We've done, they're called three-point verifications. Before I was here, the DPW did the point one, which was the interior, seeing what line came into the meter. And then point two and three are the ones that are done by actually visually digging up the stop box. The ones that DPW did were the ones that the state randomly picked addresses in the city that we needed to be done by October of, October 16th of last year, which we completed. Those are the ones that were either added to the replacements or were not. We only had two or three out of the 140 that we inspected that actually were not copper. So that's good. I'm hoping that this is, our numbers are similar, so replacements aren't huge. Replacements, I will be getting back to, back started on the 24th, 25th, and 26th of this month, and then also the last two days of the month. I think it's 29th, 30th. We have, I think, 42 more to go to get the state's mandated ones that they sent us. New notices were sent out to those residents who haven't either reached out or scheduled anything. They're, it is working with the help of Facebook and these second notices that we've been hand-delivering this time. So we were answering questions, you know, if somebody was home. So that has definitely helped. I don't know if you've noticed, but the pickleball court is being started to put in at Grant Park. I spoke about the MS4 permit. Davis Street Bridge is coming along. The mayor, treasurer and I, we meet bi-weekly on that, and HRC is working on that to get our permit moving forward with. uh, Street Bridge is coming along. The mayor, um, treasurer and I, we, we meet, uh, biweekly on that. Um, and HRC is working on that to, to get our permit, uh, moving forward with, uh, the state. So, that's good news. And, um, our EPA water testing is something new that, uh, that came from the, the, um, Michigan Drinking Act, that we have to test our water. Um, the closest downstream from the, um, uh, the, the, the pressure relief valve, and this is the third quarter that we've been doing it, and our water's been coming back fine for all the new, um, uh, bacteria that they want us to test for. So, uh, our water is good. So, knock on wood, we will stay that way. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Uh, nothing from the treasurer tonight. Madam Clerk, report for administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I have a budget amendment I need. We, our, uh, city hall is in dire need of server storage upgrade. Um, I don't know if you do know, but in 2021, we purchased, um, scanners for, at all of our desks, um, which have been, uh, greatly helpful for, um, sewer and water reports. Were able to, um, tie rate to the addresses, um, in BSNA. Um, that, that's what, uh, it was a, a large amount purchased for these special scanners that will work with BSNA. Um, but we utilize them daily, um, within the building department, um, assessing, um, all of the modules, the treasurer's office as well. Um, but, uh, the, there's not a magic cloud that has unlimited storage. So, um, we, um, have it ready to be installed if you approve it. Um, but, um, I would need, um, a motion to approve the SBS, um, proposal of, uh, $1,860 for that server storage expansion. And then I would need to amend my budget after that.
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion?
Is this, Mr. Mayor, uh, is this, is the server space cloud based, or is this like an onsite server?
It's cloud.
It's cloud, but it's still not unlimited. And, um, due to the amount now of, like I said, uh, they added, um,
When they scan, they're creating images that in previous years, you know, we didn't have that automation going on.
Right.
So, it's improved efficiency greatly because they can just scan a document and link it, like she was saying, in BSNA. But that image takes up, uh, server space.
Right.
So, we're seeing a huge increase in how much server space we're using.
So, how long will this last?
Uh, that is a great question. I do know that we will be using three of the five ports. I'm really not techie. I'm very sorry. Um, so I know that we will get some additional growth out of this, um, initially. Um, we have talked, uh, with updating our servers in general, um, with the police department at a later date to something larger since we do share a building. But, um, this is the best option for us at this time.
Right now.
Yeah.
I think we had a motion.
Yes, we did.
Do we have support?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And I will say that we have, um, there's, uh, Mayor could probably help or, um, Chief Klosny. Something ends, um, support of Windows something.
10.
10? Ends, um, ends in next month, right? In October, I believe. And, um, all of our computers now in our city hall office, and I think most of the police department now have all been upgraded, um, as of now, so.
And that went really smooth, I thought.
It, it went pretty, pretty smooth, yeah. I mean, uh, some hiccups learning, um, some of the new, um, Outlook stuff, but, um, it was, it was pretty good, actually.
Yeah, we, we had no issues, although most of our computers were all, all new. So, we only had a couple dispatch ones, but, yes. Excellent. Anything else tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, nothing from Parks and Rec or Historic District Commission. Um, but I would like to mention, I posted on social media, uh, we are looking for volunteers that would like to join either Parks and Rec or Historic. Uh, if you have interest, please email the city clerk. Uh, her email is, uh, listed on the city website. Um, looking for new volunteers for those. Ms. McGrath, anything from you tonight?
Um, as council is aware, there was, uh, I can't even call it an appeal. There was a case filed that appeared to try to appeal the decision of the council by Golden Rockies slash Chris Aiello, um, that was originally assigned to Diane Jersinski. I'm not mentioning anything that's confidential or private here. Uh, I had, uh, indicated that it really should be assigned to Judge Matthew Sabah because he's the judge that handled the first five years of this litigation and had the familiarity with it. I did file a motion, um, a week or two ago on that. Um, as soon as it hit the clerk's, uh, inbox, she transferred it over. And for the first time in my almost 30 years of practice, she actually refunded the motion fee that I paid on that. So, um, you know, now we'll start actually litigating the action with, uh, Judge Sabah.
Excellent. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
All right. We now open the floor to the public for any item at all. Does not have to be on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? Since there is none, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, sir.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion?
Is this, Mr. Mayor, uh, is this, is the server space cloud based, or is this like an onsite server?
It's cloud.
It's cloud, but it's still not unlimited. And, um, due to the amount now of, like I said, uh, they added, um,
When they scan, they're creating images that in previous years, you know, we didn't have that automation going on.
Right.
So, it's improved efficiency greatly because they can just scan a document and link it, like she was saying, in BSNA. But that image takes up, uh, server space.
Right.
So, we're seeing a huge increase in how much server space we're using.
So, how long will this last?
Uh, that is a great question. I do know that we will be using three of the five ports. I'm really not techie. I'm very sorry. Um, so I know that we will get some additional growth out of this, um, initially. Um, we have talked, uh, with updating our servers in general, um, with the police department at a later date to something larger since we do share a building. But, um, this is the best option for us at this time.
Right now.
Yeah.
I think we had a motion.
Yes, we did.
Do we have support?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, second, I need the motion to amend my fiscal year 2026 general fund budget increasing GL 101-215-731-010, computer maintenance by $1,900 from unassigned fund balance.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Devrent. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And I will say that we have, um, there's, uh, Mayor could probably help or, um, Chief Klosny. Something ends, um, support of Windows something.
10.
10? Ends, um, ends in next month, right? In October, I believe. And, um, all of our computers now in our city hall office, and I think most of the police department now have all been upgraded, um, as of now, so.
And that went really smooth, I thought.
It, it went pretty, pretty smooth, yeah. I mean, uh, some hiccups learning, um, some of the new, um, Outlook stuff, but, um, it was, it was pretty good, actually.
Yeah, we, we had no issues, although most of our computers were all, all new. So, we only had a couple dispatch ones, but, yes. Excellent. Anything else tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, nothing from Parks and Rec or Historic District Commission. Um, but I would like to mention, I posted on social media, uh, we are looking for volunteers that would like to join either Parks and Rec or Historic. Uh, if you have interest, please email the city clerk. Uh, her email is, uh, listed on the city website. Um, looking for new volunteers for those. Ms. McGrath, anything from you tonight?
Um, as council is aware, there was, uh, I can't even call it an appeal. There was a case filed that appeared to try to appeal the decision of the council by Golden Rockies slash Chris Aiello, um, that was originally assigned to Diane Jersinski. I'm not mentioning anything that's confidential or private here. Uh, I had, uh, indicated that it really should be assigned to Judge Matthew Sabah because he's the judge that handled the first five years of this litigation and had the familiarity with it. I did file a motion, um, a week or two ago on that. Um, as soon as it hit the clerk's, uh, inbox, she transferred it over. And for the first time in my almost 30 years of practice, she actually refunded the motion fee that I paid on that. So, um, you know, now we'll start actually litigating the action with, uh, Judge Sabah.
Excellent. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
All right. We now open the floor to the public for any item at all. Does not have to be on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? Since there is none, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, sir.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Backus?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Devrent?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?